Good afternoon. I will call to order the May 7th meeting in the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. We have a new Commissioner joining us today. Jean Coleman is joining us for the first time. Also here today are Commissioners Allison, Magrino, Lukey Pierce, Sweezy, Kogel, and Rockwell. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the April 23rd meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. That motion carries. Our next item of business is to approve the agenda. There's one copy of the agenda in the hallway for your reference. We'll determine which items will be considered on consent, which will be discussed, and those that will be withdrawn or continued to another meeting. So, starting at the top of the agenda, Item 1 is at 1110 22nd Avenue North. That's a conditional use permit for a development achievement center. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 1? On Item 1? Okay, we can discuss Item 1. Okay. Well, we're sorting the agenda right now, so we'll get to that in a moment. Moving along. Item 2 is at 1330 Industrial Boulevard Northeast. That is a conditional use permit and variance related to signs. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 2? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 3 is at 2535 Aldrich Avenue South. That's a rezoning and a variance. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 3? See, no one will put Item 3 on consent. Item 4 is at 3046 21st Avenue South. Several applications related to school athletic fields there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 4? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 5 is at 4155 Hiawatha Avenue. Conditional use permit and site plan review. Those applications have been withdrawn, so we'll accept the withdrawal of that item. Item 6 is the Minneapolis impound facility, 50 DuPont Avenue North and 100 Irving Avenue North. Several applications for reconstruction of the impound facility. That item has been continued or will be continued to the May 21st meeting, so if anyone is here for that, it will be considered on May 21st. Item 7 is at 525 North Third Street. Several applications for a new commercial building. Is anyone wishing... Actually, that Item 2 has been continued to the May 21st meeting, so we'll consider that in two weeks. Item 8 is at 747 North Third Street. Several applications for a new residential building, for mixed-use building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 8? So, we do have some people here. We can discuss Item 8. Finally, Item 9 is at 1000 North Third Street. Several applications for a new residential building as well as a future land use plan amendment at that location. We'll discuss Item 9. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 2, 3, and 4 will be on consent. We will discuss Items 1, 8, and 9. Item 5 has been withdrawn, and Items 6 and 7 will be continued to the May 21st meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion and a second. All in favor. That motion carries. Next, we have no committee of the whole consent agenda, so next may have a motion to accept the withdrawal of Item 5. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. That motion carries. Next may have a motion to continue Items 6 and 7 to the May 21st meeting. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is Items 2, 3, and 4. Is anyone here for Items 2, 3, or 4? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. That motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. Start with Item 1, 1110 22nd Avenue North. Staff is Ms. Wallace.
The item before you is a conditional use permit to allow a development achievement center located at 1110 22nd Avenue North. This is in between Emerson and Fremont in North Minneapolis, just a block north of West Broadway. The applicant... Here is a photo of the site. The applicant has proposed to locate a development achievement center, also known as an adult daycare, in an existing church building. The adult daycare would serve 10 to 44 clients, starting at the lower end and potentially increasing capacity over time. The daycare would occupy just over 1,500 square feet in the church building that has previously been used as classroom space. Staff did not have any concerns about the impacts of this use on the surrounding area, and the church is served by an off-site surface parking lot that's located just across Fremont from the site, and that provides sufficient parking for the church use and the adult daycare, although the applicant had indicated that the... Most of the clients would be shuttled to and from the site by a shuttle service that's provided by Hope Center. And, let's see, there are a couple photos of the site here, and I will stand for questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Lukey Pierce.
I mean, is this replacing any of the services they previously have partnered with using their building, or is this in addition to services that are existently... Or which were approved of recent years, if I recall correctly, for the building?
So, there have been a number of applications in the past for emergency shelters to be located at this site, but they've always been for temporary uses, and there hasn't been one for some number of years. So, the last approval was in July of 2013. So, the only uses in the site right now are for the place of assembly and their accessory uses, so classrooms and things.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak first. If anyone is here on behalf of the applicant, can let us know if there's anything you'd like to add to staff's presentation. Otherwise, I think we have one other speaker here. Would the applicant like to add anything to staff's presentation? Okay. If you don't have anything to add, we just have one speaker here, and you can come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
I am at Dally. I own the property right on the backside here. You see my garage in the right corner there?
And what is your address?
My address is 2211 Emerson Avenue North. I've lived there since 2002. I've owned it since 2008, I believe. The problem is not with them. I don't know them at all. It's with the church. The church has been a miserable neighbor for the entire time I've lived there. They've had garbage issues the entire time. The temporary emergency shelter was a men's homeless shelter that they promised would never have alcohol. It became five years of hell. It was nothing but a drunk tank. We had people coming in our yard, which is fenced. We had to try to get in our house. I had tenants move out. I can no longer... Could no longer rent it during that time. The one floor, it's a duplex. I've always lived in it. The church is garbage, which is on this corner here in the alley. That alley is really destroyed by the garbage trucks that come in three times a week. They have a fence around it. This is an old picture. You can't really see the dumpster and all that, but it sticks way out into the alley, the whole fence and garbage system. My garage there in the corner gets hit about six times a year by vehicles trying to get around. And this winter, the gates always open. I believe my wife also sent you an email of description of what it's been like to live there. Again, I don't know these people. They sound... An adult center sounds great, but how is the church going to manage garbage? What are they... Are they ever going to fix up the alley that they have destroyed with their trucks? The sidewalk. If I have a crack in front of my sidewalk, I have been taxed for it and had the sidewalk replaced. They destroy it. It's a gigantic hole that becomes a bug haven in the summer. I mean, it's the church... After they stopped having the men's homeless shelter, they started having parties with alcohol there, and they were not supposed to do that, but all the parties had alcohol. I mean, the management... The Secretary of the Church once told me she has no clue what goes on outside the back door, and that's the problem. The church has no clue what block they're on. They don't participate with anyone. We have a pastor on our block who won't go to that church. It's... The church has really done a number on my relationship. I mean, it's really incredibly unpleasant living with them as my neighbor. But what are they going to do about garbage? This is going to have an increase in garbage, which means it's going to be more trucks tearing up that alley, more piles out of stuff sitting on the outside, more people hitting my garage. What is the church's responsibility? Not them. I'm not worried about them. It's the church who has proven to be an incredibly bad neighbor since 2002.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else? Yes.
And I spoke before... Let me say, the reason the homeless shelter didn't come back is that the church finally accepted me in to speak before their board, and they voted it out. They said they had no idea it would become what it was, but they voted it out after I spoke to the board.
All right. Thank you. And I think we have one more speaker, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Groh. I'm a pastor at River of Life. Started... Been at the church for seven years. I started as a pastor there this past September, so this is all news to me. I've not heard of, since that time in September, of any of the concerns. It's concerning to me to hear that a neighbor is this anxious about our past use. I'm aware of the men's shelter that we housed. I was not aware that it was a drunk tank. I know that there were issues with it, and that's why it was asked to leave. We also house loaves and fishes, which provide a community meals there nightly for a very long time. They've not been there for a period of time. I wasn't aware of any issues with that. We are interested in moving forward, trying to be good neighbors, trying to provide service into the community, which is the proposed use for this adult daycare. If there are specific concerns that we have, we should figure out a process of how to address those. We certainly want to be attentive to those going forward. I don't think there's a process now, just if I can. So, you know, there's probably a better process than, in this moment, hearing of things that are of a concern. We should be talking better than that, I think, and be more attentive to that. Our hope going forward is to, you know, provide community service through the adult daycare and becoming more attentive to how we can service the North Minneapolis community. That's what our hope is with this particular proposition.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Lukey Pierce, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. So, can you perhaps, as the Minister, tell us what the maintenance plan is? There's a letter sent in that detailed that gutters haven't been replaced and that there's ladders by various locations across the property that have been there a while. Is there a plan for repair and about garbage removal?
Yeah, let me tell you, at least specifically with the gutters. So, I started in September. Those gutters were stolen. They were copper gutters, and the flashing underneath it were stolen. It would have been last summer sometime, I imagine. It was less than that, is what they tell me. You could... I'm just telling you what they tell me.
I understand. Sorry.
Okay. So, my understanding is that sometime in that past year, someone stripped all the gutters off of it, and we know that they need to be replaced. It's a very expensive proposition. We came into... We got a bid to at least do the gutters so that we can maintain the building coming into the fall, then the snow flew, and we still want to go forward with that. We're in conversation with Lutheran Social Service, who is here with us as well, to help provide some building management going forward and also to provide funding to do the capital improvements that need to be done to the building, which, our current estimates, are anywhere from $600,000 to $800,000. Our hope is to improve that building. Sizable things need to be done, such as the gutters and the roof. We're in an area where things get stolen. That's caused harm to our building. We want to be good neighbors going forward and figure out a way to do that. But I think I answered the specific question about what our plan is.
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious. I know you have a capital improvement campaign, it sounds like, but I'm wondering if there's certain things that are more critical in terms of timeline and importance to being a good steward for that anchor of the block. I actually used to live for 13 years just a couple blocks away, so I'm aware of things that get stolen. But I think that perhaps maybe working with the neighbor to set some realistic expectations of when he can expect some accountability and then who he can call if things aren't happening, because it sounds like there's maybe... Things are not being communicated, and I don't know who he has to talk to to get stuff done, but it's frustrating, because I know that we've had people here before when the shelter application was coming before us, and it was a lot of the same complaint. So, I'm literally disheartened to hear that it's still ongoing.
As am I. I mean, and actually, I'm even more disheartened that the first I'm hearing, you know, as I came into, at least being in a position of leadership at the building, this is all news to me as of this day, and I find it unacceptable. So, at least, no matter how this all works out, I want to give you my specific contact information. You can have a direct line to me and accountability for whatever needs to be done and needs to be resolved. I'd like to be attentive to that.
All right. And Commissioner Coleman.
Pastor, I appreciate your willingness, as you stated, to work with your closest physical neighbor, I guess, is the case. I have a question that is raised in the letter from Lori Dally, and that is the relationship between Abdi Omar of Hope Center LLC, and then you also mentioned Lutheran Social Services. Can you tell me what the relationships are between your church and those two organizations?
Sure. Let me start with the first, which is through Abdi and the Hope Center, which would be the adult daycare. So, they approached us back in fall of last year, and we started the conversation about expanding some service out of our building. So, that original relationship was directly between them and River of Life Church. During that time, we're continuing to try to promote the building, trying to reestablish the building in the neighborhood for community service. We've begun conversations with Lutheran Social Service to see if they can also help support us and help support the management with their experience of doing community service work in our neighborhood, to be in our building and to help us to manage, maintain, and to provide community service to the neighborhood. So, that's still under development, that relationship. But obviously, what we're here today to talk about is the... Trying to move forward with the adult daycare specifically.
All right. If there are no further questions of the speaker, we can see one last time if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this item. See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, conditional use permit for the development achievement center. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I will move approval of a conditional use permit.
Second. A motion and a second to approve Item A, the conditional use permit. There is one stated condition there. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman? I vote for approval of the motion.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
No.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierce?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Eight to one.
Motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 1. Our next item for discussion is Item 8, 747 North Third Street. Staff is also Ms. Wallace.
This project before you at 747 Third Street North is a mixed-use development with 139 dwelling units and 3,600 square feet of commercial space. There are three applications. A variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement from one small space to zero. Site plan review for a new mixed-use building with 139 apartments and 3,600 square feet of commercial space and a minor subdivision. So, you can see on this image that the existing site is quite large. It's occupied by a large surface parking lot. So, this map shows where the proposed development is. You can see on the site, the diagonal line running through the site is Bassett Creek, which runs underneath the middle third of the parcel. And then this shows in a little bit more detail the portion of the site that will remain and then the portion that will be subdivided to create a new mixed-use building. The site for the proposed development is 39,179 square feet or just underneath. This is a floor plan and site plan of the proposed building. Shadow study. And the landscaping plan there is pretty significantly exceeding the landscaping required for the site. While there are no setbacks required for the site because it is in the downtown district and it's not within 10 feet of any residential windows, they do have a setback from the south property line, which runs... Which is a vacated alley that has been proposed as kind of an informal pedestrian connection in this area. There will be two floors of underground parking and this one and two, another floor plan of the first floor, and you can see that there is one walk-up unit along Third, and the parking is access off of Third as well. And then here are a couple of renderings of this proposed development. The main exterior materials are a stone masonry and two types of niché hot panel, and staff has only identified one standard that requires alternative compliance, which is visual interest due to a large blank wall, and staff is recommending that the applicant mitigate that blank wall on the south elevation. And I will stand for questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, see if there's anything you'd like to add. State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Anthony. I'm with Schaefer Richardson. I think Lindsay covered the project fairly well. One thing I do want to point out along... This is on Third Street North, which is part of the North Loop paving program. So, the new streetscape intends to widen the sidewalk in front of the building, creating a really nice pedestrian-oriented environment, which will be enhanced by the facade and kind of the transparency of that first level. We are setting the building back slightly from the curb so we can add some greenery along Third Street, and there'll be some availability for outdoor seating on that corner as well.
All right. And are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can move on to other speakers, and I know there are a few of you who'd like to speak, so you can come to the microphone and state your name and address. You can go one at a time if you prefer.
Hi, my name is Deb Luther Quast. I'm a resident of 720, which is one of the condominiums that bought the other side along Fourth Street. And I'm generally excited that something's going on this surface lot. I like development, not a NIMBY. But one concern that I have is... Can I move some?
Yeah.
This sort of demonstrates it. One concern that I have is that... So, I reside in the 720 building, which is the middle of these three along Fourth Street. And in between 720 and 730 is a sort of a, you know, open green space that is actually above a... I think it's a green underground, green roof parking garage. But on the other side of us, across from Fourth Street, is an elevated off-ramp, 494. And it's quite loud today, but, you know, we obviously all knew what we're getting into when we moved into the building. The concern I have is that because the end of the U of this new proposed structure completely blocks the gap in between the two buildings, is that there might be excessive noise because of the traffic coming off the highway ricocheting into this corridor. So, I guess my question maybe to Schaefer Richardson is if they've done any sort of noise reduction studies or they know what the impact will be. My concern would just be that it doesn't get worse because of the way that this is situated, and if there's anything they can do to diminish the impact of excessive noise.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker, come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name's Molly Malek, and I bought into the 720 loft 12 and a half years ago. It was my closing date, and I'm on that backside, so it's been open to me for years. And originally, I was told by the same developer, it's the same developer who did the 720 lofts, that there possibly could be a three-story building back there at one point. And the last I had heard was possibly a park behind the building, which I was delighted about, but now a six-story building. I will... I'm on the fifth floor of mine, and that's my side. I'm on the corner unit where my bedroom and kitchen and living room will look out into other people's units at this point, and it sounds like the building is going to be quite close. I think 33 feet, they said, from our building. So, my main concern is that diminished privacy issue I will have.
Thank you.
You need my address. I actually...
I think you gave us your address.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Name's Derek Hooton. I also live in the 720 building. I'm on the northeast side of the building, so that would be the most impacted by the development and its southeast corner. Similar to the other speakers, just concerned about the proximity. So, with this rendering specifically, just curious if everything's to scale to get a sense of what that setback is. I do appreciate Schaefer Richardson. You can tell that they've done other projects in the neighborhood, and so they're, I think, a responsible developer, and I appreciate that. But just with that proximity, wanted to get assurances on where that'll be placed because of that privacy issue. And the one last request, I guess, on that would be, there's balconies, so it's on Slide 50 of the staff report. The balconies on the east side of the development, proposed development, are outset, whereas all the others on the, I guess, exterior of the building are inset. And just if the... Just with all proximity, if it continues as is, if there's any way to get the balconies inset to just create a little more privacy so that I'm not living with new neighbor essentially in my unit, right? So, and in case I'm walking around, you know? Yeah. So, that, I guess, is what I wanted to bring up and ask.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Mark Hudding. I've got a allergy throat here, so hopefully I'll get through this. Real quickly, I'm on the North Loop Neighborhood Board, and we have worked with Schaefer Richardson pretty extensively with this property. They've brought it into our Planning and Zoning Committee, and then they've also brought it to our board. They've been excellent to work with. They made design changes to the building to enhance the exterior ambiance of the building. I think it's really a nice-looking structure. They've also agreed to this extensive planting in between the buildings, realizing that there was, you know, fairly close proximity. So, they're working... We've landscaped half of the alley. They're working with us to do the other half to make a very nice pedestrian walkway and space for dogs, pets, and stuff. So, I just wanted to say that it has been a very good experience working with them.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? See, no one. I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we have three applications before us. Are there further questions, or would someone like to start things off with the motion? Commissioner Coleman.
I would love to hear from Schaefer Richardson about ideas for alternative compliance with that blank wall.
I think what we will probably end up doing is some sort of green screen across that blank wall. It's the blank wall. I don't know that we have an image up here or available of it. It's actually on the east side. So, it's... I think it was the one right there. So, on the top... Let's see how I can do this. It's along the east side, so on the... Around the corner from Third Street right here, it's where our parking ramp goes down into the parking garage. There will be some landscaped... Just some landscaping in that area anyway, and so, as opposed to... opposed to changing material or something like that, we're proposing to do some sort of green screen.
And if I may ask-
Yeah.
-a couple more questions. So, the noise issue that was raised, have you considered that at all and are there perhaps landscaping solutions that could reduce noise that you've experienced?
Sure, well I think there, the noise issue that the first resident brought up was actually about reverberation off the wall back towards the, the courtyard on the adjacent property. And I think the nature of it is that that would happen at a higher level, given that the elevation of that courtyard is up a little bit. So I'm not sure that there's landscaping alternatives for that beyond the, the trees that we'll plant in that kind of linear promenade that goes, that, that we're working with 720 lots and 730 lots on. You know, eventually those will get to a height that may help. I, I think that's something that, that needs a little bit further look, looking at. As far as the balconies and the courtyard area in particular, and the courtyard, we're looking at creating kind of a landscaped edge on that courtyard that will be a buffer to noise and kind of a visual buffer to the courtyard itself. So I think that we've worked pretty closely with the North Loop Neighborhood Association on that piece and the intent is that it's a kind of a more passive use as you get to the property line in the back and more active as you move towards the building and I think that should help significantly with any noise issues out there.
And one final question, there is a written comment that was submitted that focuses a little bit on the park that has been discussed on that lot for several years now. And I believe in your application, you mentioned something about that, could you remind me what's in the application but also potentially talk about Schaefer Richardson's future plans, if any, for developing a park?
So this parcel right here is kind of a separate, will be a separate ownership structure from the rest of the parking lot, that's the subdivision, the minor subdivision application that we're applying for right now. We are in conversations currently with the park board on potentially having them acquire part of the surface parking lot, those are ongoing conversations. So we certainly are open to that and we've been working with them for years on the, the North Loop Park Plan. So I think what's referenced in the application has to do, I'm not sure that it has to do actually with this particular project, so I'm not, I'm not 100% sure where that information is coming from, but we, we are in conversations with the park board on potentially putting in a park per the North Loop Area Park Plan adjacent to this building, but not as part of this particular project or site.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions or would someone like to make a motion? Three applications before us, starting with the variance from the loading space requirement. Commissioner Cronz.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance to reduce minimum loading requirement from one stall to zero stalls.
We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the variance from the minimum loading requirement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Lipke here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Nine zero.
That motion carries. Next we have item B, the site plan review. Commissioner Cronz, would you like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the site plan with the eight stated conditions.
Motion to approve item B, the site plan review with the eight stated conditions. Is there a second? A motion and a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Just briefly, you know, I think the, the noise concern is, is a valid one, we don't really have any jurisdiction on that, but I would encourage Schaefer Richardson to think about what can be done just with, you know, I imagine from, from an engineering standpoint, it's just giving depth and a few places in that wall would, would go a long way. And you've got some sort of vertical blank walls where you might be able to play a little bit to break up the sheer brick. So talking to somebody about that, I think would be a sign of good faith and, and would benefit both your current and past tenants.
Any further discussion? I'll just add, I appreciate the comments from the neighbors, this building is, what's proposed is well within the building envelope that would be allowed by the zoning code, they could actually do a building that's somewhat taller than this by right and cover a lot more of the lot, so while I certainly respect those comments, it's, we really just don't have a lot of discretion over some of those things because the only applications before us really are the, the site plan and a variance for a loading space. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve item B, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Lipke here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Nine zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronz, would you like to take a stab at item C?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for minor subdivision.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item C, the minor subdivision. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Lipke here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Nine zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item eight, our final item for discussion this evening is item nine, a couple blocks up Third Street. Staff is Mr. Crandall.
The project before you is located at 1,003rd Street North, this is in the North Loop Neighborhood. You'll recall that as, an application came through for this site in April of last year and was brought forward by the same applicant for an office related use, which I'll provide an image of in a moment. The project is, or the project site is currently zoned for the I-2 district with a downtown parking overlay. It's about a 27,000 square foot parcel. Future land use for the parcel is industrial and the site does fall within the North Washington Jobs Park Industrial Employment District, that's a land use feature adopted in the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan and governed by the Industrial Land Use and Employment Policy Plan which was adopted by the Minneapolis City Council in 2006. This is an image of the site that shows the extents of that Industrial Employment District. It includes the blocks immediately to the north and west of the site and then extends somewhat north of the North Loop Neighborhood. The North Loop Small Area Plan adopted by the City Council in 2010 also guided the future land use for this parcel to remain industrial and for the Industrial Employment District to remain on the site. This is an image of where we currently have industrial land and industrial guided future land uses for the city. It's a relatively small amount of the land in the city and, once again, was reserved for those uses for their job creating and economic development purposes. Minneapolis 2040 draft update to the Comprehensive Plan addresses these issues somewhat and we talked about this a little bit in the committee of the whole, but the recommended land use at this time is for this parcel and the parcels immediately around it to remain as industrial guided properties for production and processing related uses. The applicant is seeking several applications to construct a new six-story mixed-use building with 129 dwelling units and 10,000 square feet of commercial space. The nature of this application is such that it would require a future land use map amendment to the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan to remove the Industrial Employment District in order to allow for residential zoning on the parcel. The applicant has partnered with the neighboring landowner, which is the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, to seek the amendment to the future land use map in conjunction with their property, as it is, I believe, MPHA's intention to attempt to redevelop their site for residential uses in the future as well. Although their site does also fall within the Industrial Employment District. And you can see their site, the site here, identified in this slide. The staff report spells out a number of policies contained both within the Comprehensive Plan and the Industrial Employment, the Industrial Land Use and Employment, Employment Policy Plan. The primary, one of the primary purposes or one of the primary functions of the Industrial Employment District is to restrict residential uses within the boundaries of that land use feature and that's one of the few kind of hard lines that the Comprehensive Plan draws in terms of where residential uses can and cannot be. The existing building on the site is a two-story warehouse style industrial building that has been vacant for some time, formerly the Zakharv's Produce Building. The applicant, one year ago, proposed renovation in addition to this building that would have added approximately 60,000, 60,000 square feet of office space. That proposal was approved by the commission and was in compliance with the Industrial Land Use and Employment Policy Plan. This is an image of the proposed project, six-story, 129-unit residential building with ground floor retail, so this would require the demolition of that existing building. I won't go into too much detail on the design of the building except to say that notwithstanding the existing land use guidance on the site, staff doesn't have major concerns about the design itself and were the land use guidance different, I think we would likely support a lot of the applications and under a different policy context, but because of the location of the site and the nature and importance of the existing land use guidance, we are recommending denial of all applications. If there are questions about the project design, I'm happy to answer that. I did provide the commission with a number of recommended conditions of approval that should you come to the conclusion to approve the project, staff would recommend adding those conditions to the site plan review application. So I'll conclude there and take any questions.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Kronz.
Hey, Pierre, you've mentioned that the Protected Industrial Zone Guidance prohibitively restricts residential, but I know it, it does allow office use. So it's not only restricting to industrial uses, what other uses other than office are, are allowed in this Protected Industrial Zone?
Sure, so basically any of the uses that are allowed under the existing industrial use zoning districts are allowed in the Industrial Employment District. Its function as a land use feature is really to restrict the addition of or implementation of any residential zoned property. The Industrial Land Use and, sorry, I keep forgetting the name of it, the Industrial Land Use and Employment Policy Plan talks about some of the ideal uses for those districts as being kind of job dense and designed for flexible new economies emerging in the industrial sector, so it talks about how, you know, industrial employment, the nature of industrial employment is changing and that we have a need for a great deal of flexibility in terms of the availability of building types, land uses, size, price, in terms of providing space for incubator businesses, life sciences, but in addition to those things, any office related uses would be an allowable use by the industrial districts.
This is going to be an unfair question I'll ask anyway. In this general area, in this Protected Industrial Zone, do you know how many new jobs were created? I ask that because I know there's several businesses that have relocated to this area, Standard Heating's one, Uptown Imports, Auto, Lerner Printing, those are all existing businesses that relocated to this general area. But are there any new jobs created in this general area? There's, you know, there's a vacant site at Plymouth and, and Second, which has been vacant for quite some time. So I'm wondering if you're aware of actual new job creation?
I don't have that information tonight, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, I have two questions. The first is, you have in here the current Comprehensive Plan land use for policies, can you tell me what the Comprehensive Plan that's being developed now and is in a draft stage anticipates will go on the site?
The future land use map in the draft plan? This is an, this is an image showing where that site falls and gives an idea of some of the land use categories at the top of the screen there. So production and processing is the equivalent future land use to the existing industrial land use in our current future land use map. I believe there is an additional industrial land use category proposed that is somewhat more flexible in the future land use map for the 2040 Plan that may allow for some residential uses, but that's not proposed for this site. Essentially, the land use guidance is, is remaining the same from the current plan to the future proposed plan.
And second question is, I guess it's probably two questions, but of the map, if you could bring up the map of the industrial areas around the city, yeah, thank you. What is the current utilization of that, all those areas, if you've got a ballpark percentage? And then the second part of that question is, has the city any market information about future utilization of those areas?
So I, I don't have a utilization rate or percentage, I don't know that the city has done that work to assess the success of this, of these areas since that plan was adopted. I know that Community Planning and Economic Development's, Economic Development and Business Development Division conducted a study a couple of years ago that looked at the need for different kinds of spaces, buildings, land for what they see as the highest demand, industrial and employment related uses that would be a good fit for industrial land in the Twin Cities. What it did find was that a lot of production and processing and distribution related uses were locating in areas outside of the city proper, so within the metro area but in more suburban locations. And there was a concern expressed in the report that a lack of land use and appropriate building types was contributing to that. It also went on to make the argument for the merits of increasing employment density in those areas as a driver of innovation and that was sort of the- And that was sort of the thrust of the study, was to find ways to encourage business development and innovation in these districts. I don't know that any land use recommendations, other than the ones contained in the draft Comprehensive Plan, have come out of that study, but I believe that was a supporting document for maintaining a lot of the industrial-guided land in the future land use map for that plan.
Commissioner Schrader.
Oh, thanks, staff, for excellent presentation. I had a question about the percentage of kind of industrial use. I believe that something that you mentioned was like seven percent. Does that include kind of railroad tracks and kind of unusable space?
It does not in this, in this calculation in this map.
Great, thanks.
Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Kind of microphone, say your name and address for the record.
Hi, I am Amanda Jansen of Shaffer Richardson. Look at it, nine hundred North Third Street. Mrs. Marie Michelle Shaffer Richardson as well. I wanted to go back to the North Loop Small Area Plan. You know, as you can see, this is the location of the Redwell that we were discussing, and it's in the darker purple for the Industrial Employment District. However, there is a lot of other areas in the North Loop that are this transitional industrial, which is highlighted in the lighter purple around here. And it kind of creates a buffer of the, the edges of the North Loop, and it makes sense that you'd, you know, extend that buffer of the transitional industrial to Plymouth, which is north of the site. And especially given when there's not any current industrial uses south of North Twelfth Street. There's currently the vacant Zucarves Building. Shaffer Richardson is currently developing a parking ramp. There's the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority and then the Charter School. So we're not replacing any current industrial uses. And in the future, it'd be difficult for this site to attract industrial uses, mostly because of the size. It's less than acre, it's point six acres. And new industrial buildings and users are looking for space that's more like seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand square feet. And that would require roughly three to four acres of land. And so we're sort of landlocked around us to be able to expand and have a typical larger you, or larger land for industrial spaces. The other thing that we decided since going to committee of the whole a few weeks ago is that we are planning on having this to be a hundred percent affordable at sixty percent AMI. So in addition to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority that is looking at redeveloping their new headquarters and adding affordable housing, this, the Redwell would be affordable as well. So we think that the comp plan amendment would help further the affordable housing policy that is a priority in the city.
Right. And Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Magrino.
Out of curiosity, that, I guess that's kind of sudden. Did you all pick a partner in that, or are you doing that as, like through Shaffer Richardson? Are you partnering with the MPA?
For the affordable? No, we're, after conversations with council members and knowing the direction of the priorities for this, in order to get housing, we understand that that's, we need to do some affordable housing.
Commissioner Magrino, I would also add that we did complete affordable housing development at fifty-six and sixty percent AMI in the North Loop, delivered in 2016, June, the Cameron, which is forty-four units and historic. So we have done that before as an organization as well. So, and some of our staff, including myself, have had background working on affordable housing prior to working at Shaffer Richardson. So we have some bench strength there. And if you recall, that we did have conversations about having Section Eight project-based units within the development, and those would, those would, we would also continue to work with MPA on, you know, with the affordable housing at sixty percent of the whole building, but also having some voucher project-based units within the new building as well.
Thanks. Commissioner Coleman. I, I didn't notice the order. So Commissioner Schrader, then Commissioner Kronzer? Am I getting that right?
Sure. Just a quick question. You said it was a hundred percent affordable at sixty AMI, and for how many years?
Well, I think it depends on the different affordable housing, you know, funding, layering. And so we'd, we'd like to talk about that a little bit more, but I think right now it'd be at least twenty years, so.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you. I want to go back to your previous proposed office project. Can you talk more about how long you marketed for, what, what steps you took to market and fill us in on why you've pulled the house, the office project?
Sure.
Because of the kind of conversation we're having today?
Sure. So we came to planning commission about a year ago, and we were marketing the building about six to eight months before that in, for a sixty thousand square foot office building. So one of the requirements for, from our lender is that we had to be fifty percent leased in order to start construction. In the market, all of the office users that were looking a year, a year and a half out, the larger units, they are, the larger users, they wanted more like twenty thousand square foot floor plates. And this building and the size of it only accommodated ten thousand. So, so the, the office users that would be able to sign a lease early on and wait for the construction did not fit their needs. And then the smaller tenants, they didn't have the timeline that would be able to coincide with the longer construction. And the other thing is, you know, we looked at, you know, do we, how do we rehab the existing building? And so we did a lot of iterations until we've gotten to this place still presenting this alternative project to you.
Right. Commissioner Coleman, maybe you've had your question answered. Commissioner Sweets.
I recall when we went through the approval of the parking ramp next door, that one of the considerations was that people who were going to be working in the building that were, was previously proposed needed the parking spaces. And I'm wondering if, if there were to be a residential building of this size with the number of parking it has and things like that, do you still think that that parking ramp will be full? Or, I mean, besides during Twins games, I mean, does it, does it still need, does that still need to be there? I remember those things being pretty closely linked when they came through.
Yeah. Commissioner Sweets, members of the commission, yes, we think it'll be full, and there's a few different reasons for that. So we do own the surface parking lot that is, that was the prior proposal in front of you, that is looking at being redeveloped. And so that's almost three hundred stalls, surface stalls that exist in the neighborhood that will get redeveloped at some point into other uses, whether they be buildings or park and other things. So there's that demand that it takes. We own the Bassett Creek Business Center, which is sort of between the parking ramp that's being built and the aforementioned surface lot. And that has about a hundred fifty thousand square feet of office. We also have, and it has a demand and is over, we, the lot is overparked as it is right now, the surface lot. And so we see demand for office, but then the, the benefit of having multifamily as well is, we do have the option to kind of, you know, double use and share the parking in the ramp, which is nice, because then you don't have to build as much of it elsewhere. So that's also something that we are planning on and will do. We have our Gurley Lofts building, which is a block away, which is thirty multifamily units where our offices are, ten thousand square feet of office. It's a historic building, so there's no parking. There's some surface parking, maybe ten stalls behind the building, but otherwise, no parking for those, for those residents. So yes, we envision that it'll be utilized on both the office side in daytime and the multifamily set time in evening, evenings, yeah.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Can you refresh my memory as to what the unit mix is? I'm curious if it's a hundred percent affordable. Are there, is this for single people? Is this for families? Is it for, you know, you know, who's, who's all going to be living in the building?
Well, I would say that we need to relook at the unit mix, given that now we're going to be doing a hundred, a hundred percent affordable, but it's still a majority of studio one bedrooms, I believe over seventy percent are the studio one bedroom. So it is geared towards the, you know, single tenant.
Thank you.
And are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can see if anyone else would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone else? No one else? So, oh, we have one, one more speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tracy Scott, I'm Deputy Executive Director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. And I just wanted to say that we support this application, as was stated before, but I just wanted to stand in front of you with a verbal support. We fully expect over time, and we've been talking about our strategic plan with our board recently, and we expect that we will redevelop our site to be a mixed-use development with affordable housing. And so this is consistent with that vision.
Thank you. And are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have several applications before us, starting with Item A, the future land use map amendment, which obviously is where we should start, since the rest of those really depend on the direction that that goes. Are there any further questions or discussion? Or would someone like to start off with a motion? Commissioner Schrader.
Not starting with a motion, but just my comments. I generally want to keep our industrial areas. As a city, these are things that once we lose them, we lose them. And we have so few areas, it would have to be a good reason. And for me, I've heard those, I'm very excited about a hundred percent affordable, especially at sixty percent AMI for twenty years. And I think what factors into, what's factoring into my decision is really if the land is not as, as usable for industry and using it for affordable housing, I think is a very good combo to come together. I'm still a little skeptical, just to make sure that we are making sure we're using this industrial land the best way we can. It, it takes a lot for me to go against what staff's recommendation is on this, but I'm very excited to hear Shaffer Richardson working to make this a hundred percent affordable.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback off those comments a little bit, but also expand on them. And some of you who are at committee of the whole already have heard this, I forgive me for being redundant, but I, I completely agree that we have a need for industrial land, because we don't know what the future holds. We're, we're going to need to have, it'd be awful to get to thirty years down the road and realize we don't have land for things. At the same time, I think that what industrial use, what it means today is different than what it meant yesterday, and it's certainly going to be different than what it was tomorrow. So I am not entirely sold on the concept that residential living is entirely, you know, incompatible with future industrial uses, depending on what those are. I mean, we, we all know about maker spaces. I don't think anyone is batting, and I know that we have those in schools, and saying, oh, my gosh, industrial machines making little plastic things, the horror, you know? So I, part of me is thinking, what is the future direction? And I, I don't know. But I will say that I think maybe if we are seriously concerned at this little itty-bitty corner of the world, and I'm not just talking about this one lot, but I'm talking about from, from this all the way up to Plymouth Avenue, just on, you know, and maybe a block over from Washington, if, if it's such a square footage that's, we're in dire need of industrial use, I think we need to find somewhere perhaps in the city where we want to look at expanding industrial instead of this. And I say it only because as much as we have that as a goal, it just hasn't seemed to realize, be realized in terms of job creation, especially for underserved communities, especially considering that it's adjacent to North Minneapolis. It, there's, last time I checked, I don't know if there were more than a handful of North Minneapolis residents that actually worked in the industrial zone. So I, I'm a little bit, if we're going to have a barrier to the river and the amenities, and quite frankly, to downtown, I'd rather it have a function. At the same time, we have a goal of having more affordable housing, and oftentimes, we see those located in areas of concentrated poverty. And I see this as an opportunity to link, you know, the North Loop with North Minneapolis and actually create a corridor of sorts that allow, allows for a lack of a barrier, which right now, if you, if you look at the map of the whole industrial, of the city where the industrial uses are located, it pretty much walls off North Minneapolis from the North Loop and from the river. And I guess I, I kind of feel as though maybe it's worth the sacrifice and that we're meeting another one of our very dire, urgent comp plan needs and goals. And at the same time, I'm not sure that it's incompatible in the first place, so I don't feel like we're entirely negating the presence of industrial uses anyway. So I'm much just as, I'm sure going to be moving to approve this, or at least I'll be supportive of approval of the applications, only because I feel as though that it actually is in complete compliance with the goals of the comp plan, at least in the way that I've come to embrace them. And I'll stop at that.
All right. Any further questions? Or would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Kogel.
I would like to move approval of the future land use map amendment to amend the future land use map of the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth and remove the Industrial Employment District land use feature.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Item A, the future land use map amendment. And I'll ask if there's any further discussion. I will note, since we are going in a different direction from staff recommendation, we should cite some findings for that. And I'll draw your attention to, starting on page two in the staff report, there are some findings related to that future land use map amendment. Perhaps we can come up with some reasoning behind that, cite some Comprehensive Plan policies, so anyone is free to add that. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I can, I can help identify some compliant moments here. So land use one point one, point five, ensure that land use regulations continue to promote development that is compatible with nearby properties, neighborhood character, promote street life and activity, and reinforces the public space. Housing policy three point three, point four, supports policies and programs that create long-term affordable housing units. Housing policy three point six, point one, promote housing development in all communities that meet the needs of households of different income levels. And one more for good measure, economic development policy four point one, point one, the public development resources and other tools to leverage maximum private sector investment for public benefit.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner, I didn't see who was first, Commissioner Sweets or Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. I'll be voting against approval in this case and supportive of the staff recommendation on it. And I just want to say why. It has nothing to do with not being in support of, of the project as an affordable housing thing. I do think it looks like that just came forward tonight, and I think that's, I appreciate it as it, as what it is, and also is it an aggressive move, you know, to try to get the project approved, which, and that's not a negative comment, it's just how I see it. I do think also that while it is consistent with the policies that have been outlined by the fellow Commissioners, it's also very inconsistent with those that staff pointed out with respect to the industrial use. And I think there's probably room for discussion here. The comp plan going forward is under review, and this is good evidence to me that there are reasons to have further discussion on it. But I think, I think it's a mistake to go project by project, kind of, and where these policies very clearly seem to be in conflict with each other. So that's why I won't be able to, to support that.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. Similar to Commissioner Sweets's comments, I am conflicted about this proposal. The affordable housing goals certainly are very strong, particularly with the oral amendment that I heard this afternoon. However, it does go directly against the current Comprehensive Plan. But there's another piece of evidence that was distributed this afternoon, a document from the North Loop Neighborhood Association that states that they voted to support the project. So I think it's just all a little premature. And another factor in stating that it's premature is hearing about the public housing authority's future plans. It seems to me that this is, if there is, if there are two proposals for public housing on adjacent sites, that there should be some coordination between those two proposals. And so all of that leads me to say that this is a little premature, and I will be voting to deny the motion.
Commissioner Schrader.
Just a quick question for the deputy director. In some of the earlier proposals, they talked about Section Eight vouchers. Will that also be included? Will that also be included, or is that still being discussed? If you could give a little clarity where that is.
Yes, we're committed to providing project-based vouchers for the development. Now, the number has sort of shifted as the discussion has developed, but we're committed to making sure that the 60% affordable, as they're proposing, that our voucher layered on top would take that down to the 30% level.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Magrino.
Thank you. So I'll be supporting the motion. You know, I, for me, we talked about this a lot at Committee of the Whole, and it was like a fairly interesting conversation about, you know, our industrial policy in general. And it does seem like we're kind of missing at least one piece of that. You know, we're sort of designating this land and saying that we can only do certain things with it, but it doesn't really appear that the market has taken us up on that in a lot of situations. And that's not exactly our responsibility to figure out as planning Commissioners. You know, just looking at the, I don't know that they're actually technically findings, but the sort of factors in the amendment request here, I mean, I think this is a fairly clear-cut case, kind of like with the project over in Prospect Park last year, where, you know, this area has very clearly changed in the past 10 years. It does appear that the applicant has made a good faith effort to go through the land use approval process for an office building there, didn't get any bites on the market. It's kind of a smaller site, and I think that this overall does further the city's goals. I mean, I, obviously, the affordability part is good, but I don't know that that necessarily is something that we would even need to require or exactly condition here, but it's good to hear. So yeah, I will be supporting the motion.
Further discussion? And I'll just add, I, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, I was a little bit skeptical of this particular change as well. I had cited the market study that the city had done in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update, which really showed that there certainly is not a shortage of industrial property in, or I should say, there is a shortage, there is not an oversupply of industrial property in the city. And it concerns me a little bit, particularly in areas like this, where it is important that we provide some industrial land, but, you know, in some cases, there's demand for other uses there as well. And those types of uses can pretty easily outbid what an industrial user is willing to pay. And I certainly understand that there are smaller sites and buildings like this that maybe can be a little bit tougher, or that have a lower clear height, tougher to find a tenant for, although this building is fairly characteristic of a lot of older industrial buildings in the city in, you know, other industrial zoned areas. So I don't know that that case is strong enough, in my opinion. So I have some concerns with that. I will say too, this boundary, the southern boundary of 10th Avenue for this Industrial Employment District has been studied at length, certainly as recently as the 2040 Comprehensive Plan that's out for review right now with the North Loop Small Area Plan, which isn't, wasn't that many years ago, that the area north of 10th Avenue was identified as one that would remain industrial or employment-based, as opposed to transitioning more to residential. I do think, though, you know, if there is consensus and we go in the direction of shifting that boundary, that we maybe take a close look at it, I could certainly understand that, you know, maybe Plymouth Avenue, as opposed to 10th Avenue, is more that hard and fast line, but I think that's certainly something we should consider as we continue to review the 2040 plan as well. So if there is no further, oh, Commissioner Kronzer.
Commissioner Kronzer, just did want to echo your statements. I said on the North Loop Community Advisor Committee, when they were doing their smaller plan in 2010, and this was a hot topic of debate, was where that line should be. I was advocating for the line to be at Plymouth, because transitional zoning, transitional industrial zoning does allow for a lot of flexibility, and it seems like Plymouth is a very strong edge compared to 10th, which is a fast-moving street, but not really a physical boundary. And just also wanted to make the point that a zoning district does not necessarily equal employment for city residents. I'm not sure there's good evidence that these protected industrial districts actually produce employment for city residents. I mean, they produce space to do industrial work, but I think Commissioner Lupe here mentioned that the percent of city residents employed in these districts is pretty low. So I'm hoping through the comp plan and some other actions that we can get better policies to help employer or more at-need citizens.
And if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the Future Land Use Map Amendment. Commissioner Kronzer cited some reasons for that, and Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Coleman?
May.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
Seven to two.
And that motion carries, so moving along, we have several more items, and Mr. Crandall, I'll just clarify, if we do vote to approve all of these, I know you had some conditions you were recommending for the site plan review at least, maybe you'd just like to speak to those a little bit, make sure we.
Sure. So the rezoning application required to implement the project is to add the industrial living overlay district. In addition to that, conditional use permit is then required for dwelling units to be established in the industrial living overlay. The structure exceeds the maximum building height for the base zoning, so there's a conditional use permit to increase the maximum building height from four stories to six stories. The applicant is also seeking a reduction to the minimum parking requirement. The project does not qualify for a parking reduction under the proximity to transit incentive. So they are seeking a reduction from 118 spaces to 46 vehicle parking spaces. They're also seeking a variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement from one space to zero spaces. And then a variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 3.24 to 3.87. And then, of course, there's the site plan review application, and I did provide you with several suggested conditions of approval with that application. In general, I don't, I think staff is, well, the conditions address staff's concern with regard to the site plan review, that's what I'll say.
Commissioner Kronzer and Commissioner Magrino.
Questioning about the site plan. There appears to be no public realm improvements along 10th Avenue. It appears that street trees and grates could probably fit there. There, are there underground utilities or other factors preventing street trees?
I don't know the answer to that question. The applicant may be able to speak to that. Staff is recommending that the project implement some pedestrian scale lighting along that elevation, but we did not condition any additional greening. You will notice that the project is implementing a significant amount of new greening on the Third Street North public right-of-way, and is proposing to extend that curb in a manner similar to what's being implemented with the parking garage across the street.
And Peter, and I know we have several more questions. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. You had referenced an FAR variance that is listed on the, on the first page of the staff report, and it's not listed on the agenda or in the, in the body of the staff report. I just wanted to clarify. Is that, in fact, needed? Should we, should we be adding that to the agenda? I guess that's my question.
Yes, yes, that's my mistake. So there's an application missing from the recommendation section.
All right, we'll, we'll take care of that once we get to that point. I was also going to mention, do you, regarding those site plan conditions, do you simply have those on something you were going to hand out, or were you going to present those to us? Oh, they are in the packet. I missed that. Oh, in today's handout, okay.
Yeah, the primary considerations there, outside of what are generally sort of boilerplate conditions about mechanical screening and approvals timelines, was that there's a fence on-site at the rear of the property, adjacent to MPHA's property, that we're requesting more detail on to show compliance with the code requirements. We're also requesting that the applicant do pedestrians' scale lighting along the 10th and 3rd Street building frontages, and then that they mitigate what is a relatively small blank wall condition on the 3rd Street North elevation.
Okay. Commissioner Magrino, then Commissioner Lupe here.
So I, just, you know, looking, so the FAR numbers, I guess, will change if it's going to be an affordable project. I'm wondering, maybe this is a question for the applicant, you know, is the interior of the building potentially going to change a lot? You know, it seems like the affordability part came up in the past week or so. Would it maybe make sense to continue this for a cycle while we see maybe a more final building, rather than having to go back and, you know, if, like, building materials change and things, having to do that administratively?
The exterior material changes were not, they wouldn't have any changes. It would just be a matter of maybe a window shift in here and there in terms of unit layout, but in terms of exterior materials and height or anything like that, would not have any significant changes.
Commissioner Lupe here.
I have a question for staff. Given that the affordability aspect of this was, in my opinion, a really critical component, I think it's maybe the whole, I brought up, and it was emphasized, that if we're trading off one need of the comp plan, we're fulfilling another, and that's a very big need. So my question is, where would you, as staff, recommend conditioning that minimum 20-year, 100% affordability? Because I feel as though it's something that the applicant is offering. So how do we, where would you recommend placing that?
I don't know that I would have a recommendation in that regard. I think there's still some debate as to the commission's authority to condition applications with regard to affordability, so I don't have clear policy guidance to go on with that. I might ask Mr. Wittenberg to clarify.
Given the applicant's offering it as their own proposed condition, where would we, where do we play? It's not like we're forcing them to do this, where do we put it?
Commissioners, Mr. Crandall is correct, that we have to be very cautious about giving the impression that there's kind of exchange, an exchange of approval based on the fact that there's affordability in the project. I guess my recommendation would be that you maybe recognize it in your findings. You could have done so, or reopen the findings of the Future Land Use Map Amendment, perhaps your FAR variance that you'll be producing findings for, that that would be one of your findings, but again, I would be cautious about including it as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Rockwell, did you hear?
No, I was going to point out the variance.
Okay. All right, so I think we're clear on all the applications that are before us. Would someone like to make a motion? We can start with Item B, the rezoning. Commissioner Lupe here.
I move to approve the petition to rezone the property, add the industrial living overlay district.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application to add the industrial living overlay district. And should we be providing some findings with that, since staff has not really provided that? So I might just suggest perhaps someone could come up with a few findings just to justify that, particularly in light of the fact that the Future Land Use Amendment has now been changed to remove the Industrial Employment District, changed land use to transitional industrial.
And Commissioners, just a reminder, on the criteria for rezoning, that unlike the kind of quasi-judicial cycle interview variances, conditional use permits, you need not meet every single finding for rezoning, but the key finding is the consistency with comprehensive plan.
So, you know, perhaps we can simply state that we are supporting the rezoning because the comprehensive plan has, will be amended to guide that site for transitional industrial. Maybe that would be sufficient. Is there anything else anyone would like to add? Hearing no one, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Coleman?
May.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
That's seven to two.
That motion carries. Next, we have a couple of conditional use permits. Item C, to allow dwelling units in the industrial living overlay district. Item D, to increase the maximum building height. Someone like to make a motion? Once again, we'll want to add some findings to those. Commissioner Rockwell.
I'll give it a go. So I will move approval of Item C, conditional use permit. And as to the findings, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, general welfare. And I think this is a, the use is residential use, it's immediately adjacent to a series of other residential uses, it's within context of the neighborhood. For finding number two, injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property, I think the same finding essentially applies, which this is consistent with the neighborhood, in particular on the south side, and the worries of externalities in terms of industrial and residential go the other way, not bringing residential into industrial. In terms of Item Three, I think we can just adopt staff finding there that there are adequate utilities. Item Four, we can adopt staff's finding. And Item Five, I would refer to the comp plan policies that Commissioner Kronzer referred to earlier in the hearing.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Item C, the conditional use permit to allow dwelling units. Stated some reasons for that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Coleman?
May.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
Seven to two.
That motion carries. Next, we have Item D, the conditional use permit to increase maximum building height. Commissioner Rockwell, would you like to?
Sure, I'll give it a go. So I move approval of Item D, conditional use permit to increase maximum building height.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Item D, the conditional use permit for building height. I'm just looking at those.
All right, and so for finding number one, establishment, maintenance of the conditional use will not be detrimental. You know, I think that the, we are just moving this residential use up contiguous with the former industrial, sorry, former residential use. contiguous with the former industrial... Sorry, former residential use. And thus, the conflicts that would have existed now no longer exist since this will be residential. For number two, again, this is within... This is adjacent to a residential district. For number three, we can adapt staff analysis there.
Yeah, I think three, four, and five, the analysis provided was more supportive.
Which are eight, nine, 10, and 11 in our staff report.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve item D. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Coleman?
Nay.
Lukey-Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
Seven to two.
That motion carries. And now, we have three variances, E and F, which relate to the minimum parking requirement, minimum loading requirement. And then, a third one that's not listed on the agenda for FAR. Commissioner Rockwell, would you be interested in moving along?
Impromptu findings. So, I'll move approval of item E variance to decrease the minimum vehicle parking requirement. All right. And for finding number one, that practical difficulties exist. You know, I think that this is a project that was planned in conjunction with an adjacent parking garage. I think that the uses in this area... Well, this does not fall within the... Our parking district, a transit parking overlay. It is very close and is right near the largest transit facility in the city of Minneapolis and probably state of Minnesota, in Target Field Station. For number two, I think we've determined that the owner will use the property in a reasonable manner. Number three, the proposed variance will not alter the essential character of locality. You know, there's a mix of buildings in the North Loop that some have parking, some do not, as they're historic buildings. And I don't think this will... Don't find that this would change the essential character of the neighborhood.
All right. So, we have a motion, and I believe we had a second. We have a second to approve that. Commissioner Coleman?
I'd just like to, on this topic, restate the reason that I am not voting for the motions, that I think it's premature. I think there are great opportunities to coordinate with the neighborhood, with MPHA, for example, on rezoning the entire area there rather than parcel by parcel. And in the context of parking, we've had an oral amendment to this application that says we're going from a mix of affordability to 100% affordability. And I don't think we have any information in the record to support whether or not 46 is adequate or inadequate. It may be adequate, it may be inadequate. Thank you.
And Commissioner Rockwell.
I'll just say that as a... In terms of adequacy, you know, I'll refer forward to our draft 2040 plan in which we have, at least on the table, suggested by staff, no parking requirements whatsoever in the city, period. So, I think that staff's assessment of our parking need in the city of Minneapolis going forward is that we don't need it. So, I refer to that staff research.
All right. And so, we have a motion and a second to approve item E, the variance related to parking. If there is no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Coleman?
No.
Lukey-Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
Seven to two.
That motion carries. Next, we have item F, the variance to decrease the minimum loading requirement. Commissioner Rockwell?
All right, I'm going to need help on my findings. I'm not good with loading requirements. But I will move, just to get something going here, approval of item F, variance to decrease minimum loading requirement.
All right, we have a motion to approve item F, the variance to decrease the minimum loading requirement. Is there a second?
I'll say, I would be happy to have a discussion on this. I do not know enough about loading requirements to make these findings.
You know, I would add, and Mr. Wittenberg pointed out, there is a dead-end street there with a cul-de-sac. So, there's probably adequate circulation there to allow for loading and for an apartment building that's primarily tenants moving in and out. And I think with that, there is adequate space there. You know, so when we look at the practical difficulties, providing that on-site is really not necessary when there are adequate opportunities off-site. Commissioner Lukey-Pierre.
And also, I will point out that staff appears to note that if it were reviewed in isolation from the fact that it was previously incompatible with the industrial use, that there are potential for findings to be made, such as the irregular shape as a practical difficulty. And the fact that it won't be... It's of a residential size and scale of similar proximity, so it won't be injurious, and so on and so forth. So, I feel as though staff report almost already has addressed those in light of the fact that we've already approved the previous land use applications leading up to this one, for this particular application.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve variance F. Hearing no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Coleman?
Nay.
Lukey-Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
Seven to two.
That motion carries. Next, we have the FAR variance that is not listed on the agenda. Is listed in the staff report. And it was noticed, I will clarify that. Would someone like to make a motion on that? Commissioner Rockwell?
All right, I will move approval of the FAR variance to increase FAR from 3.24 to 3.87.
We have a motion to approve the FAR variance. Is there a second? Second, a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes. Finding number one, the practical difficulties exist. You know, the building height and bulk are really consistent with other properties in this neighborhood. It is an oddly shaped site in that there is a corner missing from the site. And so, that creates difficulties not created by the applicant there. Number two and number three are the same findings as the previous variances.
Any further discussion on that? Motion and a second to approve the FAR variance. Hearing no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Kogil, I mean, Coleman?
No.
Lukey-Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
Seven to two.
That motion carries. Finally, we have item G, the site plan review. Commissioner Rockwell?
I would move approval of site plan review with the following six stated conditions. One, that all site improvements shall be completed by June 15, 2020, unless extended by the zoning administrator, or the permit may be revoked for noncompliance. Two, CPED staff shall review and approve the final site elevation landscaping and lighting plans before building permits may be issued. Three, applicant shall screen all onsite mechanical equipment, including rooftop mechanical, to meet the requirements of Chapter 535.70 of the zoning code. Four, the applicant shall provide the detail of the fence design proposing onsite demonstrating compliance with Chapter 535 of the zoning code. Five, the applicant shall implement pedestrian scale lighting along 10th Avenue North and 3rd Street North building frontages. And six, the applicant shall employ design strategies to mitigate the blank wall condition along 3rd Street North between the principal entrances.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve item G, the site plan review with the six stated conditions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Coleman?
Nay.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey-Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
Seven to two.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item nine. That's our final item for discussion today. So, we have committee the whole on Thursday, and we are adjourned. Are you sure how that happens?
Oh, that is right.
Yeah, that's right.
How much drama?